Good evening, everyone. With the time being six o'clock PM on Tuesday, January 10th, 2023, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order and ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the nation, in the God, in the visible liberty and justice for all.
Just as a reminder, this meeting is being recorded both video and audio and will be posted on the district website. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the December 13th, 2022 meeting. Is there any discussion about those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
Uh-oh.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
I'm ready.
Yes.
Yes.
Abstain.
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is an update from our student representative, Victoria Spitz. Good evening, Vicki.
Hi. So I'm going to start off with a sports update, and all the sports teams have started their winter seasons. Boys' basketball is winning, has a winning record of three and two, and girls' basketball has a record of two and three. The cheerleading team cheers for the boys' home games, and both track teams have competed in numerous meets and they have placed in all of them. It has been brought to my attention by multiple students that they have some recommendations about lunch, and for the first thing, they were hoping that we can start posting a breakfast menu on the school website or around school so that students can plan out when they want to come earlier to eat breakfast at school, or what days they'll actually like the breakfast. And then some other students were also talking about kind of switching up breakfast for lunch because they feel like it was cool to start with because it was once a week, but they feel like now it's getting more and more often, and it seems like we're having it more than once a week, and they're just kind of getting sick of it. And so they were just hoping that I could bring these to your attention in order for like future changes. And then last Friday night, Bartlett's Drama Club had a dinner theater performance at the Lodge Restaurant, and attendance was very high for it, and 80 people attended, and the club is planning on doing a play in this, in May at the school called "Noise is Off."
Excellent. Well, thank you for those updates and the recommendations. So is the request to altogether eliminate breakfast for lunch, or just have it maybe less frequently?
It was definitely more less frequently because it is a good switch to have breakfast for lunch, but it seems like it's happening like very often now when it used to just happen like once a month or twice a month.
Okay. That sounds reasonable. I'm sure they'll be happy to oblige.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Vicki? All right. Well, thank you for your updates. The next item on the agenda is the superintendence report. Good evening, Dr. Goggin.
Good evening, everyone. How is everyone?
Very good.
Good. Happy New Year. I will start with a personnel update. We have hired Esther Comans as an ABA at Webster Middle School, and Rita Lancelotta as an ELL teacher over at Bartlett High School, and Drew Malabouf as a paraprofessional at Bartlett High School. We have received the resignations of, from Tiffany Bell Navis and Olivia Bohinki, both paraprofessionals over at Park Avenue. In my instructional leadership update, I do want to let you know that our English language access testing has begun at all three schools. The window is from January 5th through February 10th per federal and state regulations. All English language students are to be assessed annually to measure their proficiency in four separate domains: reading, writing, listening, and speaking. We're obligated to monitor the progress of our L students, and the results of these assessments are used to determine L services from our L teachers. Under instructional leadership as well, I'm very pleased to say that our positive behavior support teams are in place at all three of our, all three of our schools. We had some kickoff meetings with our consultants this week. We will be working with the May Institute. We had gone out for an RFP for that, and we'll be working with Eric Mackey, Stephanie St. Joseph, and Toby Doobie. They will be providing technical assistance and data support and training at both the school and district level throughout the school year. Our contract with the May Institute includes 107 hours of technical support, 37 hours for data support to teams, 14 hours of district and school support to assist with the sustainability of PBIS initiatives at each of the schools, and 24.5 hours of professional development training. I just want to reiterate that the work of the PBIS teams is crucial as we begin to analyze student data through our educator handbook and take a look at how we can develop more proactive ways to engage students while developing restorative practices for students who may be experiencing some difficulties. All of this work in PBIS, as a reminder, falls under bucket number one in our district's strategic plan. I think it's important for you to hear how comprehensive and big the teams are. I'm very proud of the work that's been going on with this. The district team coordinator is Ms. Kathleen Barris, and myself and Dr. Mackay are on the district team. At Park Ave, we have an administrative lead, and that's Mrs. Pulioffico. She has two coaches, Coach Gina Wojo and Coach Megan Strazala, and on the team is Rebecca Boprey, Deb Castellani, Megan Dun, 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 Dundon? Oh, Kootu. Okay. Megan Kootu, Megan, I'm sorry. Sue Finney, Amy Jordan, Jennifer Kelly, Leslie Kuznekki, Stephanie Tozer, Kathy Nikosi, Leslie Pietz, Lori Piñarsky, Janice Romano, Jessica Stelmach, Michelle Verono, and Ann Thompson, and Matthew Aronian. So they're big teams. At Webster Middle School, the administrative lead is Melissa Bergeron, Coach Megan Les Varoski, Coach Kelsey Upstrom, Donna Conover, Jen Keary, Patricia Cormier, Stephanie Ryder, Lisa Liard, Heidi Peterson, and Mary DeCoursey. At Bartlett's team, the administrative lead is Gina Nieves, Coach Michelle Bigelow, Coach Alyssa Note, Sam Budett, Melinda Doherty, Alex Grande, Yvonne Lambert, Kathy Peppin, Patty Bourgeois, Al Young, Ryan Collins, and Ryan Renaud. So these teams are working and meeting with the consultant monthly, and we'll be having lots of follow-up data for you throughout the year on that, so I'm happy about that. Still under instructional leadership, I want to let you know that we meet frequently with our consultants, the TNTP and the Hill consultants. We had our monthly Hill Webster district-level meeting that was held on January 4th with building leaders and academic coaches from the elementary and middle school. Consultant Alex Stout has been facilitating wonderful meetings with, outlining the work that staff, that she's going to be doing with staff, and this includes reviewing glows and grows from teacher feedback forms, activities to analyze student data. There's a dyslexia meeting coming up and more classroom visits and modeling. So there's a lot of data collection on all areas, and TNTP does the same thing, but I just wanted to fill you in on that meeting because it just happened. I also want to let you know that the iReady assessments for ELA and math, the mid-years, are occurring in January for grades K through 12. There will be a data analysis presented at the January 14th School Committee, as previously shared, from building-based and district-level teams, sharing the results from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year. Under family engagement, I'm pleased to let you know that the Webster Middle School Band, grades 6 through 8, have been invited to perform with Bartlett High School pep band at Friday's January 13th basketball game. Students interested should be dropped off at Bartlett at 5 for a short rehearsal before the game. The basketball game starts at 6:30 and ends around 8:15. Pizza will be provided to the students, and families and community members are welcome to come and share on our Bartlett basketball teams. And coming back from years past, the PTO is putting on the Winter Carnival on Saturday, January 14th, and that is from 10 to 2. If anyone is interested in volunteering, please reach out to Park Avenue Elementary School. The more the merrier with that kind of event. And on the calendar for January, we have an LPAC meeting. We're going to do this meeting in the daytime and provide lunch for families. And under other updates, I'm pleased to let you know that the Adult Education Program has been awarded the continuation grant of $377,000 for FY '24. This will include 63 adult basic education seats and 45 English-for-speaking other languages seats, for a total of 108 seats. Last week, I had a meeting with our curriculum director, Ava Landry, and representatives from the state. They're pleased with our progress on our program, and we will continue to work with them. And I did list in your program and just put it in my newsletter, our outreach again for all the offerings that the Adult Education Program does. I am also pleased to let you know the Professional Development Committee is back. Their first meeting was January 9th. And also back in action to come very soon is the Wellness Committee. Our new Director of Food Services, Kelsey, is going to be heading up that. And briefly, under the Bartlett renovation project, I know Monique will be talking about it, but I do want to let you know that we have been asked by MSBA and DESI to calendar a meeting specifically to discuss Chapter 74 spaces. The Chapter 74 programs are our business and marketing programs. That is calendared for February 10th. And for your awareness, the Southern Worcester County Collaborative Annual Report is in your packet for review. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Goggin.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda is the Business Manager Report. Good evening, Mrs. Perangeli.
Good evening. Thank you. The first item I have is School Building Committee update. I'm happy to report that testing for our grounds, our pit and soil testing is happening. It's been happening around the district. Grounds here, they are, hit a couple of bumps in the road along the way. They did hit a pipe on the corner of the building, but nothing too serious, and they did find an underground electrical conduit over here when they were digging that was not on the plans, but it's, only goes to the shed, and they caught it before anything was pulled up, so we are all good there, but they continue their work. We have extended the modular bids. They were supposed to be coming in this week. We received requests to ask for an extension because of the holiday time and people gathering data, and they figured it would be beneficial for a more competitive bid, so that has been extended, which is going to push our building committee meeting off. We were scheduled to have a meeting on the third Tuesday of the month, January 17th, so that is being pushed to February 2nd in order for us to timely approve the modular bids when they come in. So that is a change. Everything else is on track. Like Dr. Goggin said, we have that meeting coming up date. We also did send in our responses to the design development bid package. Those were submitted into the state, so we are on track with everything, and we seem to be in good shape right now. Any questions about the building project? Moving on, I have maintenance updates. It's been a little busy lately. Activity around the district where we've had all of our fire systems tested over the holiday break, they come in, they test all the fire alarms. We've had our elevators inspected. They've come in with that. We've also had boiler inspections, so we are continuing with that. We did receive a little feedback. The town has the insurance company come in, and they inspect the boilers every year. Just, they make recommendations. That's all they do when they look at the buildings. And it's mostly at the middle school and high school because Park Ave is so new and they have a different boiler system. The recommendations were to, their certificates, the guys did not have them posted on the wall in the boiler room. They need to be posted. We had them, they just weren't posted, so we're going to do that. They had material in front of the electrical panels. They need to clear that space out and keep it open in case they ever need to get in there, and then walk around on the roof to remove debris, which the guys do a couple times a year, but they want it increased quarterly, so that has been updated there. As far as Bartlett, let's see, we had a roof leak pop up in one of the classrooms, so we are calling the roofers to come out. We were on a good stretch there for a little while, but they're starting to pop up again. I think the cold weather does that as things freeze and shift, so we will be getting that fixed at the high school. At the middle school, we had a unit that was down in the gym, and that controller has been replaced, and then we've had a couple Univent motors in the classrooms, which makes the air circulate break, so we're fixing those. But other than that, the middle school is in pretty good shape. And then at Park Ave, we recently had a couple rooftop units break down. They're blowing air, but there's wheels in there that circulated belt, which makes the airflow faster. Those wheels have cracked into pieces and kind of been sucked into the filter. So it's not that old, but things are breaking already. So we did call the HVAC in there. They were already there, they looked at it, they're going to order the parts. While they were there, they also looked at one of our IT closets because the air conditioner is also broken in there, so they're fixing that as well. So it's just, things break, we need to fix them and stay on top of our maintenance, and that's what we do on a regular basis, but we are working on all of that and should be in good shape with our maintenance. Questions? No? Okay, moving on. In your packet, I'm not going to go through it unless you have questions. You should have a copy of our FY '23 second-quarter budget update. There was nothing that concerning on there. Everything looks good. We are in good shape as we move throughout the school year, so we are all set there. And then under other updates, just a couple of items. We are in the process of going through a large financial system upgrade with the town. We are moving to a much newer version. It is going to be a web-based version versus the old desktop client kind of version, which is much better because it's, you can access it more easily from anywhere, but it is going to be a total different look and feel to the system. So we, that was just updated last week. We're just in the test phase. It's actually a six-month window of testing to make sure everything goes well, so we'll start to roll that out with users and ask them to start playing around once we get more information. I haven't even seen it yet. I was on the phone with them today, telling us it was complete. They're going to come over tomorrow and set us up. So this is town-wide because we share the same financial system with the town, so we will be going through all of our HR, our payroll software, our financial software. All of that will look different for us, but we'll be on top of that. And then the last thing I have is, we have been going through our food service review. That was yesterday and today. She was onsite, and it was Kelsey's first review. She was able to keep her cool. She was a little bit nervous, but I always think it's a wonderful experience for any new director to come in because it really kicks you off on the right foot. You learn what's going on with the program, what needs to be worked on. So we had a meeting today. It was the last day of the review, and overall, it was a pretty good review. Now, they review last year's stuff, so Kelsey wasn't here, so she was preparing last year's data, but then when they come to actually onsite, they look at what's currently being served and how the operation is running now. I'm happy to say that our certificates and certifications and benefits, and this is just a high-level overview, they're going to send us a more intensive report, which then we have to respond back to any findings or anything, and there will be a couple findings on that. Our certifications and benefits and our rosters were all good. Those are run directly through the state. We upload through the state. That tells us who, that goes towards our percentages of direct certifications and our level of need in the district. Those were all in good order. One thing we're not doing, which we haven't even had an opportunity to talk, because I just found it out today, is that, and this stopped after COVID, and I'm not even sure we were doing it pre-COVID, and I don't think we were, but lunch on half-days. Because our half-days count to the 180 days, we are mandated to serve lunch.
Oh, that's great.
So we have to find time to serve lunch on a half a day. Now, that time, and we just went through, I'm like, what is the time? I said, we already have a limited amount of time. They come in, the kids eat breakfast, they're going to be eating lunch an hour later. We have to give them the opportunity to eat, what I was told, and that opportunity, like they could come down to the, she was just giving me examples because this is going to be something different, and it's going to look different at every school. One of her suggestions is that at an elementary school, you could, you could offer eating in the caf if you wanted to do that. I'm like, we have 700 kids, that's a process of eating in the caf. She said another thing you could do is they could come down and take a bag lunch and bring it back to the classroom, and you could give them the opportunity to eat it in the classroom. They don't have to eat it in the classroom, they can take it with them, but they have to have the time to eat it. That doesn't have to be an hour, that could be 10 minutes. We just can't let them take the bag and go without any time built into that. So she said it could be, you know, it's just something that we have to do because our half-days are part of a 180 days, which is something I did not know, so that was new for me. And that was just this afternoon. So that's more to come. I said that's something we're going to work on. One of the other recommendations she made was our breakfast meals. You're supposed to have production records for everything. We've never had our breakfast program reviewed. The state hasn't done that, so this was our first breakfast review. They're supposed to be keeping production records for the breakfast, and they have never kept production records since we've implemented the breakfast in the program. So that will be a finding. It's just a matter of keeping track of what you're serving. And then the other issue she found was, and none of these are major, they're very common. She's like, she says, it's our job to come in and look and find things. That's what we do here. That's, that's, you know, we're here to find things, we're here to review. So she said the next thing that she found was, when they were serving lunches during the meal pattern, they didn't have lagoons on the menu. There was, you have to have a lagoon, so that will be a finding because for that week. So the menu pattern that week, you did not meet all the guidelines of things, of the quantity of food, so that will be a finding for that. So overall, those beans are really important to get on the menu. We got to make sure we do that.
Vicki, you're going to have beans with your breakfast now.
It was, you know, she said this is par for the course, but the trainer, her name was, the reviewer, her name was Kaylee. She was, she was awesome. She was really wonderful. She knew Kelsey was a new food service director, so she went above and beyond and really gave her helpful tips about what to do, where to go for ideas, just to assist her and, and help her grow as a leader. So she was wonderful. So they're going to file that report, they're going to give it to us. She said it's probably going to take about three weeks, and then we have three weeks to respond back with anything, and then that's part of the process. If there's any corrective actions, we make that happen, and then we'll be all set for another couple years, but at least we know what we need to work on and improve. That's part of the process, and that's why we do it. So are there any questions about that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Perangeli. Any questions or comments from the committee? No? Okay. The next item on the agenda is the principal report, and joining us, all of the principals are joining us tonight, but for the purposes of the report, it's Mr. Collins from Bartlett. Good evening.
It is. Good evening, committee. How are you all? And happy New Year.
Very good. Thank you, Jim.
If I may, I left each of you a little handout, and I would actually like to start in the order that it's in, so you don't have to flip through it. First thing is talking about our PBIS celebration. As Dr. Goggin said in her report, you saw the PBIS. This is the current plan that was adopted and what we will operate on for the remainder of this year. And I did highlight the data at the bottom. As we compared to last year's data this time, approximately 50 students were qualifying for PBIS events, and this year, we are at 150 students qualifying for those events. So we're really excited because at Bartlett, in terms of behavior intervention, it's important to offer kids the opportunity to do the right thing and to be involved in those things. So we're very excited with this plan, the way that it is right now, that allows us to increase with such a high number. So the kickoff celebrations are fun, and definitely the kids also want to be at them, I think. You would probably agree, and we want to increase this number even more because 150 kids is quite a bit of kids meeting those expectations, especially when you look at students passing six out of seven classes. That's huge. That's huge to be able to turn over the failure rate of classes and coursework. So we're very excited about that. If you'll look at the second page, I wanted to highlight as we move into a very important time at a high school, in the high school setting, scheduling is so important to gather around what is best for students in terms of what courses they're enrolled in and what their futures look like. When we think about being career and college-ready, we have to really look at capitalizing on PLTW and competing with other schools and programs that are offered in other schools. Chapter 74 is a Massachusetts-approved list of courses, and I listed all of them here because I want you to be aware that our PLTW engineering pathway is going into full implementation as well as our PLTW Health and Human Assistance Pathway. And what full implementation means there is students will have these courses offered to them, an equitable platform for quality coursework. And Intro to Engineering Design had always been offered, Principles of Engineering, and now as the students increase in that pathway, it allows us to offer what the national standards in terms of what career and technical education look like, those upper-level culminating courses. At Webster, we will do internship exploration at the end of every pathway, once a student decides which pathway he or she or they would fit into. If you look on the back of the handout that I gave you, I just outlined a little bit there about Chapter 74 being an approved vocational technical education program. They're programs that meet the definition of vocational techno, techno, technical education, excuse me, contained in the Massachusetts General State Law of Chapter 74. Those are marketing courses, which in and of themselves are a national pathway that students across the country are able to take part in. Marketing 1 and 2, Business Consumer Communications, Sports and Entertainment Marketing, Hospitality and Tourism, and Entrepreneurship. And then us looking at Bartlett, what our co-op or intern opportunities will be for those students if they choose that pathway. So we're very excited as we move forward with our schedule this year and really cleaning things up and looking at what kids need, but not only what they need, what they want, what their exploration needs to look like. So these pathways are so vital to us in year 2023, we can say now, right? And I'm excited. I'm very excited for the kids to be able to explore this. We've already introduced them to Ms. Peterson and her staff and eighth-grade students, and we will go back in a few weeks to start registering those kids, so we're really, really excited and hope that they will take this into great thought, so if they're out there listening, that they will look at our pathway courses because they really are engaging, and I feel like they are the future for our students. And then lastly, I'd like to tell you just a bit about MCAS. MCAS, of course, you know, always a stressful time for students and for teachers. Biology retest is coming February 1st and 2nd. We are looking at what reteaching opportunities really look like and what our response to instruction will look like. So in various manners, we'll be offering a biology boot camp as well as center-style learning opportunities, individualized instruction for young people by looking at, having the biology department look at the standards that the kids have missed, and almost fighting the tide of attendance at these boot camps and things like that, but using and carving out time in the day to pull those kids, any extra little moment that we can to really try to hone in on some of those gaps in knowledge. So we are ready, full force, getting staff trained to give the retest in February, and it is our hope to increase those test scores.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Thank you.
Any questions from the committee? No? Well, thank you very much for your updates. Lots of great stuff going on at Bartlett. Really excited about the Project Lead the Way work and the PBIS. I mean, you tripled your number of students that are qualifying so far, so that's amazing. Great work, all of you. So we're going to take the next item on the agenda a little bit out of order. We're going to skip down to new business. The first item under new business is the FY '24 budget first review. Dr. Goggin?
Thank you. It is my pleasure to be here tonight with the full DLT team. We take the budget pretty serious, and we actually start budgeting in November. We set our goals, and we start talking about prioritization of what our needs are and not wants. So this is our first draft. I want to publicly thank my team for working with me through this budget. If we could just hit a light that might be easier for people to see. All right. So here we are, January 10th, 2023. Our vision and mission is listed here every year. We believe we live this. We believe that we bring to the table, all of us as a collective community, this desire to make sure that every student can succeed and that we will and we can make a difference in our community and that we want to provide a quality, high-level, rigorous education for all of our students so that they can then, in turn, become contributing members of our society. As you know, we have set out an instructional priority for our district plan. We have four buckets, and everything in this budget is aligned to this four buckets, building a safe and supportive learning environment, ensuring that students are actually doing the majority of the thinking in their classrooms and their work is on grade level, and then celebrating diversity and making sure that we're providing equitable opportunities and culturally responsive practices in everything that we do. And fourth, but not least, that two-way family involvement and community engagement is something that I think is pretty wonderful. And, you know, we're, I think we're over the hump of COVID, and we're seeing lots of the things that we used to do come back, those traditions that mean a lot. And so we're pleased with all of that. Some of our highlights this past year, a big highlight is that the Bartlett Building Renovation Project was approved by the community. As you continue to hear, that building project will continue to help us advance educational programming and really stabilize the longevity of the building itself. Exciting things are coming for the students in Webster. The fact that our PBIS teams are as large as they are, I purposely read those names so that you can see that that is the belief behind PBIS. It's actually building everyone into that system. That's a positive that's happened. We also have language acquisition teams at each of our schools, and we're very pleased about having academic coaches and the additional teaching and learning support that we are receiving through TNTP, SAWSS, and HILL. And our innovation pathways and our pathways that we are going to be able to create are going to continue to expand year after year, and we're very pleased about that. It's important for me to point out that we have hired a number of additional staff as a result of COVID with ESER funds. And there's a very long list on the board here. Academic coaches, academic interventionists, counselors, nurses assistants, L teachers, a dean, special education teachers, building-based substitutes, a re-engagement specialist, and coordinator of equity and inclusion that has not been filled. It's important to note that the purpose of these ESER funds were to help close learning gaps. And we know that as, when ESER disappears, there's going to be a significant need to prioritize what goes back into the budget and what we can't keep. We are very fortunate to be a district that received ample ESER funds, and we have used them to build support systems in place. But it is unrealistic to think that everything can stay. So we've been slowly putting some things in, from the ESER funds into the LEA budget. And this year, I think we put L teachers into the LEA budget that you're going to see. Our curriculum and instruction highlights are listed for you. I, I think one of the proudest things that I leave as your superintendent is the work that has been done to bring curriculum, resources, and professional development up to date across the district. And there certainly is lots more work to be done. But this is ongoing, and a lot of our budget is spent on curriculum and instruction, which it should be because we're a public school and we're here to teach kids. We are always in awe at our community partnerships, which continue to expand. And here is a short list of everyone who continually donates. A school district is only as strong as its community. And as we all know, our community fully supports our school system. And we want to publicly thank everyone on that list for their ongoing supports. You're probably saying, why is she talking about all of that? Because a budget is more than numbers. It's about building and accomplishing the goals that you set out. As you see on this timeline, we start in November. The school committee has opportunities to weigh in on the budget up until February 28th. And then even after that, the public hearing is in April, and the town meeting is in May. We don't have finalized budgets, numbers from the state. We won't for a while. So a budget is a moving process. Our goals are always to continue to provide a safe and supportive environment, to continue to develop student programming so that our students are developing strong academic skills. We're always looking at ongoing professional development and to build internal capacity and sustainability with using the research-based curriculum and instruction and assessments that we have been providing. And we want to take a systems-wide approach. So this district leadership team sits in this room for hours upon hours upon hours, prioritizing together, trying to build cohesive plans that make sense. And we are very pleased to continue to work collaboratively as a DLT and with our town manager and finance committee. Here is a brief historical view of our district budget over the years. Mrs. Prangeli, do you want to have any comments on that?
I just think we've been very fortunate over the years. You notice in FY '21, we did take a dip because we knew we had ESER funds, and that was our opportunity to help the town and the community out by moving some of those items over to ESER. And we did move them back. And we were very fortunate last year to have the additional increase in Chapter 70 funds. So 7.17 is not your typical annual budget increase for any community across Massachusetts.
So our proposed budget first draft for the school committee is $25,313.83. That's a, represents a 5.17% increase over last fiscal year. And we will detail what that means. We are proposing some new staff. Park Avenue is proposing to make their .5 bilingual administrative assistant a full-year position, so we're increasing that by a .5. We're proposing to put back a library media specialist using ESER funds at Park Ave. We are proposing to put a family liaison just at Park Ave to help at Park Ave with ESER funds. Webster Middle School is proposing to add a librarian, media specialist using ESER funds, and proposing to put a behavior interventionist into their school to help with their substantially separate programming and behavior needs over there. That is in the LEA. And due to the moving up of students from Park Ave to Webster Middle School, we need another ABA teacher. I don't know if you recall, we had a teacher and then moved that teacher due to numbers. So we're proposing to put the ABA teacher back into the LEA over at Webster Middle School. Bartlett High School is proposing a math coach using Title I funds, replacing the academic interventionist position, which is also using Title I funds, and requesting an additional Project Lead the Way advanced manufacturing and engineer/teacher/coordinator, and that would be in the LEA funds that is in direct relationship to the ongoing development of our pathways programs. The district is proposing a 1.0 Assistant Director of Student Support Services and Equity, recommending that that is replacing the unfilled coordinator of equity and inclusion position, which is covered from ESER funds. Mrs. Prangeli?
This slide just represents the new positions on the left that we are adding. And if there is any offset of funds to the right-hand side. So if you look at the left-hand side, you'll see it by school. It outlines the cost of the positions. And then on the right-hand side, it lists, for instance, if you look at the top row, the librarian, what we, what we're budgeting for our salary. And then we are offsetting that with ESER funds, full year. Secretaries is in addition. We're not offsetting that. The family liaison is there, $45,000, and it's being offset in ESER. So this is just if there are any additional funding sources that are offsetting the positions. So if you look at the bottom, I think, which is the most important thing, you look at the net positions, it's a net 1.5 increase to the LEA because the rest was in ESER, totaling $130,274.
Here is a historical view of our October 1st student enrollment. And here is a snapshot of our student populations. I find this slide to be very important here. I think Webster services a very diverse student population. Our needs are different than some of our surrounding towns. Our special education students with disabilities percentages are 23.5% in comparison to the state average of 18.9%. Our English language learner population is certainly growing. And our high needs is at 79.2% in comparison to the state of 55.6%. Given that we're here for kids, it's important to recognize that when we have higher populations, we have to pay particular attention to our students' needs. Thus, you've seen an increase in L teachers, special education teachers over the course of years, counselors. It's just a snapshot of our counseling average caseload. Schools may not split it up this way, but I, I think it's important to note that we have increased our counselors. We do take educating the whole child seriously, not just the academic piece, but the social-emotional piece is equally as important. Mrs. Barris, do you want to? You need a microphone, maybe?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. We'd just like to provide a kind of a, just a snapshot of what our student population is in special education. And as you could see from the previous slide, we have significantly increased in our special education population here in Webster. We, I put up the, the current statistics. We have currently 485 active students in special education. That does vary a little bit from what like the state reports might report because we include all students, like for instance, although the Prokial School students, anybody that is homeschooled, we're still responsible for providing support for students that wouldn't be, you know, in the total student count on October 1st. So it's a little bit different than that count, but this is the actual picture of, you know, how many students we actually are serving at this point. So our initial referrals from last year, we, at this point in time during the year, we had 80 referrals, and we ended up with a total of about 176 initial referrals, which is in the ballpark of about 50 more than we typically handle in a given school year. This year, you can see that we are at 59 for this time of the year. So we're, we're kind of coming back to normal a little bit in terms of referrals. But the early intervention referrals are very significant. And it seems like the population is also, coming in is also pretty significant in terms of their needs. So, and then in FY '22, this time last year, we had about 454 students. So you can see the, you know, the increase overall. And then I just provided a list of, you know, by disability category. And, you know, you can see that the highest number of students is in the category of autism, which is, you know, I think a couple of years ago, it was running a close second to our communication category. Typically, you see communication and learning disabilities as like the, you know, the higher numbers. But we have exceeded that number in the population of autism. So again, the prevalence, I think you can see, you know, you hear all the time about the shift in, you know, the increase in population of students with autism. So just to give you a picture of, this is what, you know, our needs are and the students that we are serving.
Thank you, Ms. Barris. Just one point of clarification. I think the initial referrals for this year, it looks like, is actually ticking up. Whereas, right, last FY '21, it was 59. So we're on the uptick there, which...
I'm sorry. Oh, I think I might have flipped. I'm very sorry.
No, no, that's okay. And I know you're living it. So you're probably abundantly aware of that fact. But just for those that are listening at home, I want to make sure that people can appreciate just how busy you all are.
Yes. And I will, I will fix that for you for the, you know, just for the record.
No, yeah. I mean, this, it looks correct here. It's just, you know, the way that, the way that I heard it was a little bit flipped. But so you all are very busy, it sounds like.
Okay.
Right?
Yes.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
Lots of needs.
Dr. Mackay, would you like to do this?
Thank you. Our L numbers are also up. The L numbers, just like any other numbers, tomorrow, the numbers could be different. We have a very sort of mobile L population. And so a family that registers two weeks ago could potentially move next week. And so the numbers are give and take a few here and there. But we, we started counting our pre-K as well. And so we can see at Park Avenue, we have the, the highest number, obviously, based on enrollment as well. But there are 103 active Ls between K and 4, with an additional six students in preschool identified. And while we don't service preschool, we certainly keep track and anticipate needing to assess whether they will qualify for services in kindergarten. And the number in kindergarten is expected to grow because at the beginning of the year, they're only assessed on two domains. And by the end of the year, they get all four domains. And so some students that didn't qualify at the beginning of the year end up qualifying at the end of the year. So we anticipate that our numbers in kindergarten will also grow, meaning into first grade. We also have 19 students that opted out. And one note about opt-outs is that opt-out students are considered L students. Their families just chose not to have them participate in L services. So these students get monitored. These students have to take access testing. As if they were L students, they just don't get the actual L services based on their family's wishes. And then we have 11 students at the elementary school that have failed, which means they are now considered former L students. They reached a certain language acquisition level on the access test. And then they are also monitored for four years. So while the opt-outs and Fells are not actively serviced every day, the L teachers are still responsible for monitoring their progress. The Fells are monitored for four years. Opt-outs are monitored until they fail. And as you can see, the numbers are 46 active at Webster Middle School, 16 opt-outs, and 50 students, 50 students who have failed. So they have a whole bunch of students to monitor. And, and what that monitoring, just so you know what that monitoring looks like, they have to collaborate with content teachers. They have to ask across the contents, how is the student doing in your class? And then they have to come together, and they have to say, is there anything different that we can do to support our students in these content areas? And at Bartlett High School, we have 36 active students, 12 opt-outs, and 10 students who have failed. So this is a busy cohort of students that keep us on our toes, keep us trying to make the best of our time so that our students can make the most progress in the most efficient way. And so that is definitely a goal of ours, is to see more students get to language proficiency and for us to provide the best kind of support that we can, that we can give them to get there.
We're doing a lot of talking about our students because they're why we're all here. And I think it's really important for us to share every year what our student population's needs are because they shift. Did you have a question? I'm sorry.
Ms. Ramopoulos, please go ahead.
There was a very large number of Fells from middle school. Is that typical to see such a drastic drop from elementary going into middle school?
That's a great question, and thank you for asking. I think that we see a large increase because the typical L student reaches language proficiency within six years. So if they started, if they're consistently enrolled and they started at Park Avenue, if they started, if they're consistently enrolled and they started at Park Avenue, we expect them to fail sometime in middle school. And that's why that number is the most significant in the middle, at middle school.
Yeah, that is a good thing. Great. Thanks. Any other questions for Ms., Dr. Mackay or Mrs. Barris? Okay. Thanks.
We just want to provide a quick snapshot on what our anticipated student enrollment and class size might be. There are some shifts in some grade levels. This is the slide that always used to be the columns that no one could follow. So we're trying a different format. Our average class size in kindergarten right now is 19 students. We have seven classrooms. We anticipate 135 students next year, same amount of classrooms, same amount of class size. First grade, we have an average class size of 18, number of classrooms is seven. We don't anticipate a change in that grade level moving into next year. However, we do anticipate going from seven to six classrooms in grade two. With a drop in enrollment, our class, anticipated class size will go up to 21 in grade two. And we anticipate grade three to stay the same with seven classrooms. And then we anticipate the need to add an additional grade four classroom. We have six this year, but our enrollment is going up to anticipated to be 155. Anticipated class size for grade four will be about 22 students. Grade five remains the same. It's okay. We can go through these quick. Grade six remains the same with the number of classrooms. Grade seven remains the same. Anything highlighted in the pink is a change. Six and seven, eight remains the same. A quick snapshot on departments over at the high school. There are currently four English teachers. We anticipate that being the same. The average class size is 16. We do have a little bit of a shift with math. While we have about 4.4 teachers teaching, we're going to go to four teachers, pulling that same teacher into the Project Lead the Way additional classes that are going to happen in the health and social services. Science, the same thing. One teacher has been doing a little bit of science and a little bit of math. They're gonna be going to Project Lead the Way. Classes, social studies remains the same. Physical education remains the same. There is a shift with a number of students interested in band and chorus, and we're sad about this. But we are proposing a reduction to one teacher. And the, with the reduction, the anticipated class size will still be 14 to 16. There are not a lot of students interested in band, and we are doing some things to promote that. But we still don't feel it's fiscally responsible to have two teachers for band and chorus. Art remains the same. Foreign language remains the same at the high school. And this is where, every year with the Innovation Pathways, there's another course that's introduced. So there's new teachers. One of the proposed additions was a new, another Project Lead the Way teacher that could do 1.5 teaching and 0.5 coordination of Project Lead the Way. And increasing the health and social services, taking those people from math and science and, and helping them focus on health and human, health and social service, the two, two classes that are going to be offered next year. And business and marketing has two, and we anticipate the same.
This is a breakdown of our FY '24 budget. Salaries make up close to 80% of the overall budget. Our out-of-district tuition is at 8.10%. Maintenance, including salaries, is at 7.33. And then overall, if you take a look at special education, all the salaries, contracted services, tuitions, out-of-district tuitions, that makes up about 32.85% of our overall budget. And we're only looking at local funds on that. We're not including any grant funding in those numbers. This is a look at our circuit breaker funds. As you know, our tuition has gone up over the years. So this year, we did see a big increase in our circuit breaker reimbursement. If you look at the first column, it says budgeted in FY '23. That's what we budgeted last year for circuit breaker, for our out-of-district tuitions. The top column, tuitions, is the actual total amount of our tuition that was budgeted. The LEA budget is what we put in our budget, circuit breaker funds. We always try and carry over a year. So we've, we budgeted spending all of 22. And then we bring in 23. So we get a total revenue in what we're going to have available to carry over to the next year. If you look at the next column, you're going to see actual to date. Our tuitions are actually down, which is a good thing for now. We do have some anticipate, anticipated students going out. There is a list. But I think we're going to be fine there because we're already halfway through the year. So hopefully, we'll be all set with tuition. If you continue down now and look what we budgeted and add in our circuit breaker and what we have available, there is 904,000 to carry over, but we're only allowed to carry over one year. So we're going to have a surplus of funds, it appears at this point in time, in our local budget because the goal is you want to, you need to spend all of that circuit breaker. So that'll leave the local budget with the surplus of funds. Then we go into the right-hand column, and we're looking at our FY '24. As you can see, there is a jump in out-of-district tuitions, the 3.1 million. We are looking at, if you notice, our LEA budget has actually gone down a little bit. Or it's pretty level, even though our tuition has gone up. What we have done is we have, for this year only, we typically do not take any tuitions out of the special education grant. During COVID, when we were reduced, we had additional surplus funds in special education that we had to spend. We offset some of our paraprofessional salaries with that money to use it up because we had to. So we have to shift that back because that money, that grant funding, if we keep those paraprofessional salaries in the grant funding, we're not going to have the money over time to keep doing that because we're not allowed to keep carrying that money over. So what we did is we put the powers back in the LEA budget. And then we took a look at our out-of-district tuition, and we said, who's aging out? Who's going to be leaving next year? So we're not dependent on that money. So that's how we applied to the grant. We said, we're going to use that grant money for the students who are aging out. So the following year, we're not, we're not stuck with that money. So it's an offset. So it makes the tuition look a little off, but it works out in the long run for the better. Does that make sense? And then we are anticipating the 900. So that's what our circuit breaker is looking like for now. And then this is another area of concern for me. We have been budgeting school choice tuitions. We have agreed to take 100,000 every year out for technology, which helps our recycling of Chromebooks and all of that. And we also use it to offset our ABA positions at the, throughout the district. But as you can see, our school choice money has gone down. So it's not sustainable. It's not a sustainable model. So using the funds, you know, with the estimated, is still going to leave us a balance of 300, approximately 332 years because we've had some very favorable years with budgeting. But that's not sustainable, and it's not going to hold. So that's an area that we are going to have to address. And we continue to have those conversations internally. We're going to hit that wall where all this grant funding is going to go away. We're not sustaining the school choice. So we're going to have some harder decisions to make down the road as how, how we can stay. Yes, that, that's what we budgeted. Yep. We put about 100,000 in for technology, and we put 100,000 to offset our budget for ABA. As you can see, the other years, we haven't actually had to spend what we budgeted because we've done well in cost savings due to COVID mostly. When we weren't here, we had the additional funds. And then the ESAR money has certainly helped offset a lot of expenditures. And unfortunately, the staff savings because of the difficulty in finding staff and not being able to get subs, we've had salary savings which helped offset some of these costs where we didn't have to tap into the school choice money. But, you know, as things return to normal, and they are returning to normal, we're going to have to be very mindful that that's not going to be there for us to continue. That is, yeah, that was off the cherry sheet from last year. So I just level, I just went over. I looked at actually the kids that were on the roster. It was a preliminary roster. So.
Through the chair. Sorry.
Ms. Blith?
I have, I do have a few questions, but I have one specifically around school choice. If a student's school choice is out to another district and then they come back to Webster, how does that work? Do we get any refunding of, of the tuition that we paid out?
Yep. So we have to fill out rosters annually.
Okay.
We report in October, SIMS. So anybody who's in our seats in October, we get funding for. If they move out and then come back in, we don't get the Chapter 70, but they do offset the school choice. But we're getting a lot less for our school choice.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's our first presentation of the FY '24 budget. And we're happy to answer any questions. And I will turn on the light.
Thanks. Great presentation. Very informative.
The chair, have we heard any numbers yet?
No, I needed to mention that because of the change in administration at the State House. Typically, the numbers come out from the state, the third Wednesday, I think it is in January. They're not anticipating, I've heard anyways, anything coming out until March. So the town is just starting their process. I talked to him a little bit about it. I know they're working on a budget calendar downtown. I will see them tomorrow. We have our, our finance meeting tomorrow morning. I'm sure I'll get a little more, but I'm not anticipating anything right now. We have no idea what we're getting in state and local state. I did, I am looking at seeing if I can do a projection with our Chapter 70 to see what that's going to look like. The state is increasing, continuing on with all the changes. I think the state has done well too with money, and there is a commitment towards the education. So we are in the second or third year, I'm trying to remember now because it was put off a year, of implementing the new Chapter 70. So, but our enrollment is pretty level. We're not really gaining, I think we maybe gained six or seven kids in our enrollment.
Chapter 70, what gave us the big uptick last year?
Yes. Yeah.
Through the chair.
Ms. Blith?
I have, I have a few questions, so just bear with me. I'm kind of just taking notes. The, the, there's, I know that there are a lot of positions in the budget based on ESAR funds. Do we know, you, it comes to no surprise that I'm a big advocate of having a dean at Bartlett. And I do see that there's an interim dean position for next year. Is there any goal or vision to have a dean long-term? Or are we going year by year with this, with this role?
I'll be happy to answer that. I think that there is, you know, certainly if you were to ask anyone on the DLT, do you want all the positions that we have? And the answer would be a resounding yes. 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 With a big capital Y, capital E, capital S. I think one of the things that we've been challenged with as a district leadership team, and which is going to be a real challenge, is to prioritize what ends up in the LEA budget when ESAR funds are gone. It is not fiscally responsible for us to put all of that into the budget now when we are sitting on a lot of ESAR funds. And I had a real issue with that in terms of, we need to use our ESAR funds, and we need to be respectful of our town and our community that just supported a very big project. And so there will come a time when that prioritization will really need to be, from my recommendation, based on data. What is, what is most, what positions are effective? What, you know, what, what is it that we need? And again, when you keep something, you may have to give up something else. So there's a balancing act. It's not realistic, it wouldn't be realistic. And I did not want to come and present a 12% increase budget to the school committee. I think that's not, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be good. You know, in terms of the dean position, I think that third administrator works. It's listed as an interim right now. I think that Mr. Collins just got here this year. I think that will be assessed at the end of the year. It's in the budget as an interim dean for next year, as are the, you know, the librarians, the academic coaches, the additional counselors. We did put the L, some of the L teachers, because that's a mandated compliance into the LEA. So we're, we're already doing some prioritization of, and it, and it's not people, and that's the really hard thing about personnel. It's what is helping our kids find the success that they need, right? So that data collection on, on what people are doing and how is that impacting student achievement is something that's, you know, going to have to happen. I personally think they're going to extend the use of ESAR funds. I think they're going to have to for a lot of districts. I think that may come down the pipe, which will give us a little bit more breathing time here to assess all those positions. We have used our ESAR funds to get additional staff. You know, thus there's crowding at Park Ave. You know, when you think about it, we've hired a lot of additional staff over the last year and a half, two years. So I, I think that it's good to put that out there now because it's a lot to digest on where that prioritization is going to happen.
Ms. Blith, I know you have more questions, but I have a question directly related to that. You mind if I hop in?
Yes.
So just related to the ESAR funds, I understand those are intended to really close learning gaps. And a lot of what we're doing with those funds is aimed at closing those learning gaps. A couple of things. I'm concerned that we're going to have a real reckoning in the next couple of years when those funds do run out. And some of the positions that we have allocated to ESAR at this time are, are core positions that we can't function successfully without. And I understand that we need to use the funds that are available to us. I wonder about having, you know, I think of the elementary school having more bodies in those classrooms with the smaller students and closing some of those gaps. In the time that I was volunteering, which was a couple of years ago now, I remember being another adult in the classroom and wondering how the teacher was doing it when there was only that one adult in the classroom. They were doing an amazing job, but it just seems like they're, you know, and that was before COVID and before some of the other issues that have cropped up, you know, for kids and their development and that kind of thing. So I mean, I guess that's my question is related to prioritizing truly closing those learning gaps by having more hands-on-deck every day, working with kids, helping them in small group instruction for reading or math, for that kind of thing.
I do believe that that's what's going on in the classrooms at, in all of our schools with the additional staff. I do believe that's how the staff are being used.
I just wonder if it's enough. That's, I guess, the question, right? I don't know. I don't know.
At this, at this time, it is, and we have some other.
We have some other, I think if you see in the budget as well, some other positions. The coach positions are there to support the teachers in providing that strong instruction for all students. Hands-on-deck are really great, but that tier-one instruction, it needs to be strong as well.
Agreed.
And I think our, when you look at our family liaison that we are putting in to create those homeschool partnerships, that is huge, especially as parents and families start to learn to navigate Webster Public Schools and how to advocate for their children, how to be another partner. So the, the learning and the partnership isn't just in the classroom. If we can extend that outside of the classroom with some of these other positions and increase teacher skills as well around a lot of the PD and learning that we're doing, I think that's where we will see a lot of that's where we will see a lot of gains. Hands-on is really fantastic, but setting up those systems to support if we lose some of those hands-on positions is really important for sustainability.
Yeah, agreed. Thanks.
So to piggyback off of that, I'm, you know, I see in the second grade that there, that we're looking to remove a classroom. Is that going to eliminate a teacher, or are we moving that teacher or that position?
Yeah, as you saw, there's a decrease in second grade, but an increase in fourth grade.
Okay, so we're just basically, it's that position, but it's.
I have a question about that, actually. So that would put us at 21 students in second grade per classroom. A couple meetings ago, we were talking about faculty absences, and it sounds like when faculty sometimes are absent, we combine classes. That would, that would put us at like 25 kids in a second grade classroom next year.
If and when that happens, yes.
Yep. Yeah, it just seems like, you know, even at 21, we have more students in some, in some of the very low grades than we do in the high school classes.
I think another thing to just put out there for food for thought is the space at Park Avenue. Where, where will people go? Like, all the classrooms are full. So that creativity of where will, if.
And, and your question was specifically to when a, a staff member is out. Typically, as you've talked about having additional staff in the building, we're able to fill that absence with an IA for that day. There are times when we have high absentee rates that we do have to split classrooms into other, into other rooms. So, but what I think Dr. Gogan is talking about is, as far as actual appropriate classroom space, all of our classrooms, in fact, some of our teachers are now on carts. Our music teacher is on a cart, technology teacher. So some of even our classrooms that were built specifically for content areas such as music are being utilized as, as classrooms, grade-level classrooms due to space. So it's a matter of needing to move one classroom to another grade level to accommodate the numbers of students because we do not have the physical classrooms to house another grade-level room.
And just, which we didn't point out that is also important, we did put building-based substitutes at each of the buildings again in the ESER funds, so they do have a building-based substitute, permanent substitute at each of the schools. And I think that's been very helpful in terms of filling absences.
I guess I struggle still with the idea that, and, and maybe it's not the second-grade situation here, but as a more global question, it would be, do we, do we look creatively at how we utilize our existing space in the interest of suitable classroom sizes, or do we just increase classroom sizes? Right? I mean, I don't know. I don't know the, how all of the rooms are used and all that kind of thing. It just seems a little bit, I don't know. I wasn't, I didn't hear all of the struggle that you all probably had to decide on that. It seems like a lot of little kids, 21, you know?
The chair, how are we getting the anticipated roll?
We're rolling over just the first grade into second grade. So this is, again, these are, my budget is an estimate. It's an estimate of where we think we're going to land. And again, this is the first budget draft. It is a process, things could change. We certainly want to hear your recommendations so that we can go back and, and work on it.
Just to my part, the chair, we have 155 kids in third grade right now with seven teachers, and that's kind of why we're saying there should be seven teachers in fourth grade.
Yep. Which, yeah, I mean, that definitely makes sense, you know? I wouldn't ever dispute that we need another teacher in fourth grade. Yeah. I just, I know that from my experience, we start off with students in the classroom, and certainly some move out and, and many move in over the course of the school year. So I just worry what that's going to look like come, you know, middle of the year or something. I worry that the numbers are going to be high.
We are utilizing almost every space in that, we are utilizing every space. We're actually looking at the library, at making additional rooms in the library and blocking some of that. They're servicing kids in the cubbies in the second floor. I think we have used this space as creatively as we have been able to in looking at, that was one of the reasons why we were talking about modulators, and looking at putting them out potentially on the grounds. It's just, do we want to do that long-term? Is there going to be a need long-term? The extra staff that we have on for ESER, what does that look like? I know we've seen an increase in students who need servicing, both in L and in special education, and they are utilizing all little nooks and corners, and it's, and, and they're not always in the best environment because when you're putting that many kids in a small area and you're doing different small groups, the noise is so loud that they can't even hear. So they're, they're being serviced, but it's not the best environment for them to be serviced in. And that's been an ongoing struggle at Park Ave this year. We, you know.
We did meet with the town to discuss temporary modulators over at Park Ave and looking at ESER funds to use that as a temporary space for the, all the additional staff to meet with small groups. And for some reason, it just got halted, but I do think that that should be considered to free up some of the spaces because the need's not going to go away.
No.
The needs of the students are not going to go away. And certainly, we want to open up the library, and I, you know, I would hate to see us spend a lot of money renovating the library. While we have ESER funds, you know, I would recommend that maybe we do look at that temporary modular situation, which I know would get used at Park Ave in a long-term situation. But if it's a long-term modular, it's much more extensive. You have to have bathrooms, you have to get permitting, it has to really go through that whole town process. So we were looking at it as short-term. I do want to make sure that everybody's fully aware. While our needs have increased, and they do increase here, we do have a transient population, and people come and go, but the ESER funds were never meant for us to be used for long-term. So we, we really reacted quickly with the needs of our students, and we hired staff so that we were ready to go when they came back, which is not a bad thing. And, and it will be challenging to figure out how the budget's going to balance this. You know, out of respect for our town and our community, we don't want to throw too much at them at once, right? We had the building project, we didn't want to mess that up with, you know, talking about why can't they fit into Park Ave right now? But I, my recommendation would be to put that back on the table, to look at it for a temporary solution right now for the next couple of years, and do a temporary modular as opposed to a permanent situation. Because eventually, in the, I do believe the ESER funds are going to be extended, and I do believe that eventually things are going to slow down, and you're not going to need 100% of what we put into ESER.
That's a good point.
But that's just my recommendation.
Typically, we've been seeing, obviously, we had a dip in our enrollment because of COVID, but apart from that, and I don't have that slide in front of me now, but it was trending up for a bit, right? Here it is. Yeah, I don't know.
There it is.
I mean, we're at 737, and prior to COVID, we were up over 800. How did we fit 800 kids in that school before, and we can't fit 750 of them now?
Again, it's the, it's the additional staff that we've hired that are meeting with kids in small groups. I think the classroom space was fine. It was tight. I, I definitely think it was tight, but.
I will also say class sizes were, from what I've heard from teachers, much larger at that time, looking at upper twenties into thirties.
Wow.
At that time, so.
I agree. I think we only had six teachers at each level at that point. Yes, Patty.
Yeah.
I think it's, it's not uncommon when you are questioning about, you know, what happens to that second-grade teacher. Historically, if you take a look at what's happened at Park Avenue in the last few years, every year it seems to flip-flop, seven teachers in grade three, six teachers in grade four. The next year, it's seven teachers in grade four, six teachers in grade three. And so we have teachers that go back and forth based on enrollment. I will say this, that because we have central registration now, and we're not reliant on registration that happens two weeks before, before school starts like we used to, especially for kindergarten, we can, we have like a pulse of the registration. It had, there have been years that in the summertime, you know, we are continuously assessing enrollment, and there have been years in the summertime where we've had to add a classroom because the enrollment was so high. So I guess what I would put on the table is if we are already utilizing all of the space that we have, and we, we get an increase in enrollment in the summertime, and we need not a working small group space for a teacher, but we need a classroom space, then this team is going to have to get really creative. We have, to, you know, to your point about classroom, like how, how did we fit those students and we don't fit them now? We have, the, the response in ESER was to fill in the gaps, to re-engage students, to, to recoup some of the learning that, that students had missed. How did we do that? We added counselors, we added special ed teachers, we added L teachers, we added academic interventionists, among other things. We have never, and I've been here a long time, we have never had as many sped teachers, we have never had as many counselors, we have never had as many interventionists or L teachers. And they don't live in classrooms. They live, they have, they work in classrooms, but they also have to have a space to pull kids out to if it's, if it's needed. And that's the space that we're missing at this point in time. Next summer, it might be different. But I just want to put that out there, that we will continuously keep pulse on that, and we'll have to regroup based on our enrollment and what that need is. But if we need another classroom, I'll leave it at that.
Just another thing, looking long-term, I think it's important when the Bartlett High School renovation project is done that we recognize that the three pre-K classrooms are going over to Bartlett. But those three classrooms have to stay as pre-K spaces. There will be a transitional full-day, three-to-four-year-old program, which will be one classroom, and the other two classrooms have to, by regulations, be maintained as pre-K-related service spaces. So it's not like they're freed spaces for a grade three, or a grade two, or a grade one. So those, that, that's pre-K. Those three classrooms have to stay pre-K.
So we'll have pre-K both at Park Avenue and at Bartlett?
Yep, that's always been part of the plan, a, a new transitional program. I think early intervention is something that we've been really keyed into here for a long time by lowering the class size, getting additional support staff at the elementary level and at the other schools. I think when I first came here, there were only two counselors at Park Ave for 800 kids.
Yeah.
And now they're five. So I, I think, you know, we've been trying to keep up with our needs.
Yeah.
And this budget is reflective of that as well.
No, and I think it's great that we're, we're providing all of these, these services to students. I just, you know, just going back to that tier-one instruction being so critically important, having a learning environment that's conducive to that, and not having too many kids per adult would, would certainly be a priority, especially at the younger grade levels, in my opinion. Any other?
Those two spaces, is there going to be that space out there?
No.
They're going to be.
They're going to be used for the pre-K, related services, occupational therapy, speech, discreet trial.
I just have one more, and it's just a clarifying question, sorry. Under the FY24 proposed new staff, I know that you noted that we're, that there's going to be a new full-time ABA teacher that was moving from Park Ave to Middle.
No, this is in addition.
Oh, it is? That was my question.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. That was my question.
Through the chair, I also have just one clarifying question for the Bartlett Band Chorus. You're decreasing to one teacher in the, is that accurate, or is that?
That's what I read.
Okay, and was that on the presentation too?
Yep, that was, yep.
It, it's just incorrectly noted on line 386 in the actual budget, where it says.
Thank you. Please let me know if you see anything else.
Now, is that change, a reduction in staff, or is that another reassignment?
It's a reduction in staff, and then reduction in staff is based on seniority.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? I mean, it's clear that there's been a lot of thoughtful consideration put into this budget. I think the discussion is healthy, and, you know, of course, we'd be remiss if we didn't ask questions, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda, also under new business, is the approval of business manage, excuse me, business office manager job description.
As you know, Spinks has offered a time notice in April, so we will update that in April. And the job description will be updated every.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the committee about this job description? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the business office manager job description as presented.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please poll the committee?
Number one?
Yes.
Number two?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. Thank you for that job description. Always a good opportunity to update them when changes are happening. The next item on the agenda, under old business, is the monthly report on fundraising applications. Dr. Gogan?
Thank you. I want to let you know that you know as murder mystery fundraiser of Lodge, and the class of 2026 is holding a movie night for families. They're showing Top Gun on January 27th at 6:00 p.m. in the Bartlett Auditorium. They will be showing Top Gun Maverick, the O, PG 13, not designed for the younger audience, but it is designed for students and families to enjoy.
Great. Just a reminder, it's the role of the school committee to review fundraising activities, but not to approve them. Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the revised substitute handbook. Dr. Gogan?
Thanks. As you know, the minimum wage has increased from $14 to $15. We would, we strongly recommend increasing the minimum wage for our administrative assistants and cafeterias and the substitute hourly wages, and this is a voting item for the school committee. We want to go to $15 an hour, which is minimum wage.
Okay.
I know.
Actually, don't have to.
No.
No, we're not required to get, we should, yes.
Yeah, exactly.
I strongly recommend we do.
We should.
So I will entertain a motion to increase the minimum wage for, is there for, is it for specific roles, Dr. Gogan?
The administrative assistant substitutes and for substit, for anyone who gets an hourly rate across the board. So it's the, in our substitute handbook, we want to increase the administrative assistant and cafeteria substitute hourly rates.
Okay.
Specifically, administrative assistant and cafeteria substitute hourly rates.
The item on the agenda is the approval of the revised substitute handbook.
And in that handbook are the hourly rates for the administrative assistant and the cafeteria substitute.
Perfect. So I will entertain a motion to approve the revisions to the substitute handbook related to hourly wage.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Number one? Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you for that clarification.
No problem.
All right. And the next item on the agenda, also under old business, is to appoint two school committee members to the superintendent's search committee. As you all know, we're in the process of establishing a search committee for our next school superintendent, so I will open it up for discussion from the committee. Before I do that, actually, is there anyone on the committee that either is unable or uninterested or unavailable, you know, to participate in this committee that we should take off of the nomination slate off the top?
Through the chair, I am not able to make all of the meetings, all of this.
Through the chair, I am not able to make all of the meetings, all the scheduled meetings, so I will not.
Okay.
To attend those.
Thank you, Ms. Blythe.
Through the chair. I barely, you don't make all the meetings everywhere.
Okay.
I would have some pride.
All right, thank you.
Can I also come on and call the committee?
Well, that certainly makes things easy, doesn't it?
Through the chair.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate Kelly Sidiki to be appointed to the superintendent search committee.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you poll the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes, motion passes.
Through the chair, I'd nominate Ms. Navarre as a member of the.
Second, sorry.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. Well, thank you, everyone. That certainly made things easy with your busy schedules. It's an important role, so glad to be able to participate on that. The next item on the agenda, also under old business, is a review of letters of interest and to appoint members to the superintendent search committee.
Through the chair, I may have missed it at the last meeting, but can you remind me what the makeup is to be?
Yes, happy to. Thanks for kicking it off. So at the last meeting, we agreed that we would have a search committee that's comprised of 13 participants in total, and I'll run through what that breakdown was. One member from central administration, one building principal, one teacher who is also a union leader, two additional teachers, one student representative, one member from the board of selectmen, two parents, one community member, one non-teaching staff, and two school committee members. We've already addressed the school committee member piece. So in our packets, we do have a number of letters that interested parties have submitted related to participating in the search. We advertise this using email, ClassDojo, the newspaper, social media, and probably a couple of other mediums that I'm leaving out, but we've really did our best to get a good cross-section of the community and the school community itself and the larger community as well. So we've already dealt with the school committee members. The board of selectmen, by the way, had to reschedule their meeting from last night to tonight, so we don't have a name from them yet. But with the knowledge that they're going to appoint somebody who's able, with the expectation that they're able to attend all of the meetings, I would recommend that somebody make a motion to accept whoever it is that the select board appoints.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Motion from Nick and second from Kathy, Lori. And when you're ready, can you poll the committee?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is a student representative, and Mr. Collins, sorry to call you into this, but I understand you're still in the process of identifying somebody. You got late notice that you needed somebody and you're working on that. Okay, thank you for working on it, and we look forward to hearing from you. So I'm going to table the student rep portion of that at this time. And then the next.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Quick question, just because the meetings are starting, I think, next week. Do we make a motion to accept one student that's proposed?
Yes.
Rather than potentially have to go through?
Reconvene, yes. That would be great. I'll go ahead, I'll entertain that.
Make a motion to accept a student representative that is identified as Mr. Collins.
So moved, I mean, second, sorry.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Collins, for all your help on that. And the next category would be parents. So we have some letters in our folder from parents. So we had a tight turnaround time here for receiving letters, and Lori, you did a great job of categorizing them on the cover sheet here. So we had a total of five parents who submitted. I'll open it up for discussion, I mean, or recommendations. We all have hopefully had a chance to review the letters and maybe have drawn some conclusions from them.
Through the chair, I'd like to recommend Christopher Micah for, to be appointed to the superintendent search committee. I think his background with his interviewing skills and, you know, I believe he has a third grade son in the district, so I think that's a plus as well. So that's my recommendation.
Are you making a motion to appoint?
I am, thank you. I'm behind tonight.
That's okay. This is new, uncharted territory for everyone.
I'll second that.
Lori, there's a motion and a second.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes, motion passes. We have one more chair, or seat, I should say, for a parent to participate in this committee. Is there any other, what's a desire of the committee?
Through the chair, I make a motion to appoint Mr. Nod to the committee. It does appear that she has children currently in the school system, she has two that will soon join the school system. She also does have background in both education and early interventions, so I do think she should be able to bring her perspective to the committee.
Through the chair, I'm just reading the letters. I mean, I had read the letters, but just rereading them, I know that there are other parents with many children as well, like Margaret Seer has five children in the system, in the school system, so I'm not sure if there's more discussion to be had regarding the pros and cons of who we select.
Sure.
Because maybe people have some additional information that's not represented in the letters.
Sure, yeah. It's up for discussion, absolutely.
So through the chair, I would, I do like the fact that Margaret Seer does have, so she has five children in the district, one in special education, and she also has experience homeschooling her children through the pandemic, and now they're back in the district. So I think, I think that would lead to a different lens. You know, what were her struggles homeschooling? What did she feel was done really well before that and after the homeschooling? And what could we do better as a district? So that's just my thoughts.
Any other comments or thoughts about those who submitted for the parent seat? What is the desire of the committee?
I will make a motion for, to appoint Margaret Seer as a parent representative to the superintendent.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. Thank you to the parents, each of them, who submitted letters of interest. If there were room on this committee for all of them, we would have been really lucky to have them, and we're really fortunate to have a community where people are stepping up and really wanting to be invested in this process and have their voice heard. So, you know, it's my hope that if it's not this committee, it's another committee or another activity that these parents can get involved in. Their input is very much welcome. So moving on, I would say, community members? Can we walk through the, or make some recommendations here related to the community members? We had two community members who submitted. It looks like one was, one community member submitted a letter detailing, you know, their interests and their connection to the district and to education. That stood out for me.
Through the chair, I recognize that as well, that the second community member who sent a letter did not provide any reasoning for the interest or background information. I don't know if we are obligated to select these two because they were the only two, or could we consider having a parent as a community member?
Only one for the community?
Oh, okay, right, thank you.
I'd make a motion to nominate Mr. Bazanet to the committee just based upon the fact that he gave before background, his interest in the position.
So, second.
There's a motion and two seconds, two motions and two seconds. Lori, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes, motion passes. Let's see here, where to next? How about teacher who's also a union leader? We had one person submit that meets that criteria.
Make a motion to nominate, passes to the search committee.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please poll the committee on this? Can't hear. Ms. Colleen?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes, motion passes. Next, we have additional teachers who have submitted, and just as a reminder, we have two additional seats available for teachers, and we actually have two teachers who submitted, Ellen Jeffers and Peter Carney. I'll entertain a motion to appoint both of these teachers that have submitted letters of interest.
So moved.
Second.
Lori, there's a motion and a second. Could you please poll the committee?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes, motion passes. And thank you to all the teachers that stepped up. I know it's a big-time commitment, and you're already in the building all day long. I'm really thankful for their input. Let's move to building principals. Now, this is another situation where I think the building principals got asked to submit letters of interest, which we're really thankful for the interest that we've received. We had voted that we would have only one seat available on this committee for building principals. We do have, we're really thankful that we have three building principals that have submitted letters of interest to participate in the search committee. So I'll open it up to the committee for discussion.
Through the chair, I'd make a recommendation to appoint Ms. Peterson to the committee due to the fact that she's the longest-tenured applicant, and she did specify in her letter of interest that she has done several search committees before, so I think she should be very good perspective.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. So next, we have central admin. So once again, going back to the meeting, the last meeting that we had, we really struggled with this, but the committee voted to have one seat available on the search committee for the central office administration team. We asked that they self-select their representative for that seat, but we received two letters of interest for the seat. So I'll open it up to the committee to, you know, have this discussion.
Through the chair, I would like to recommend that, I would like to nominate Jill Chapdeline. Just her, I realized that they would both be great additions, but I think, looking to Jill's curriculum experience, I think that that would help the committee. Kind of look at it through that, that view.
Second.
Through the chair, their letters did indicate that they would like to do the position jointly. Is that even an option?
Well, it wasn't what, right, I mean, exactly. They both have tons of experience, they both have a lot to offer, and I really value both of their perspectives. Ms. Marozzo?
Did not get it in others?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Where those are.
Right.
Through the chair, while we didn't get other staff position, I would like to treat that as a separate vote.
Okay.
I mean, I just have, I have a person I'd like to recommend for that based upon the letters we got in. I understand they came in jointly. Once again, we did ask that they send us a one individual. Now, we're all just two. I reiterate everything, all you said about Ms. Chapdeline, so at least one recommendation. Office staff, and a separate recommendation, other staff if possible.
Okay, there what, did you make a motion?
I did.
Okay.
I did make a motion.
So was that a second to the motion? I don't know.
Yes.
Did you have further discussion?
No, that was it.
Really? Okay. So there's a motion and a second. I want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to, Lori, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes, motion passes. And as Ms. Marozzo pointed out, we do have another category here that is a non-teaching staff member. So that, that category, just for, as a refresher, was intended to be a member of the, one of the building-level teams that wasn't a teacher, you know. The idea at the time was maybe a paraprofessional, somebody that works in the cafeteria, a custodian, somebody who has, you know, ties to the building, ties to kids, and wants to, you know, have their voice heard on this committee. We did not receive any letters of interest for that category. So there are a few options that we have available to us for this. We could do away with that seat altogether because we didn't get any letters of interest for it. Or we could open that up to members of some of these other categories because we did have more than one person submit for the central office, and we also had more than one person submit from building administration. And, sorry, just one more thing. We also did have more than one, you know, more than what we needed from parents and community members, but because we had really ironed out those seats, I feel like, for the purposes of this discussion, it would be either adding somebody else from the school community or not. But I'll open it up to the committee for discussion about that.
Through the chair, just to go back to why I asked, just to do it separate. I was going to make a recommendation, nominate somebody, I would nominate Mr. Collins to be on the committee. Few reasons. One, principal in the high school, we're doing the building expansion project. I think having someone from the administration staff in the high school would make sense, especially, and also, obviously, with the big focus on trying to improve the test scores in the high school for our graduates, it'd be good to have some there. Second point being, I think we have somewhere between nine to 10 administrators, and I think there's four in central office, so to keep kind of a balance, we're going to have to add an additional person. I think it should come from the administrative staff rather than from central office. And I think it just goes back to the point that we kind of had that discussion previous meeting of trying to keep a balance between the different segments of the community. So, one reason I wanted to kind of do it as a separate vote, just at least get that out there. If I had table killer staff personally, I would ask for, I'd recommend Mr. Collins.
I would second that.
Is that a motion and a second?
I would make a motion.
Is there any further discussion about that?
Through the chair, I tend to.
Through the chair, I tend to, would like the committee as is, because once we start adding in one spot, add in another, and it becomes unbalanced.
I see.
We created the list of, this to, on, have a balance.
Uh huh, I hear you.
So, if we don't add one more person, I believe we will have an even number, right?
Yes.
We would have twelve. So, that's why I feel like it's important to add another, another member.
Another member.
Just as a point of, just as a quick point of clarification, not to add a member, but to, but to keep the bottom line the same, but add another person, in which I understand, Ms. Millet, is what you're, I just want to clarify both of your points. And, Ms. Barris, you had something you wanted to add?
Thank you. One of my concerns in terms of, like, the, you know, the group that's been assembled, although I think there's one parent that has a child who has a disability, I don't think there's anybody on the committee that really can represent student services, both special education, ELL, all of the, you know, services that you could see through the budget are, you know, probably the heaviest-hitting, you know, area for us. So, I just would like, just to say that if you're thinking about another person, it would be good to add someone who has, you know, that experience and background.
Thank you for that, that's an excellent point. Are you going to be with Ms. Blythe, Ms. Millet, and Mr. Adamopolis those nights? Thank you for your thoughts, though, much appreciated, valuable perspective.
Should we vote on the motion and the second?
We certainly can have further discussion if there's further discussion. If there is no further discussion, there is a motion on the table to appoint Mr. Collins, and there's a second to that motion. There, if there is further discussion, we can certainly have that, or we can vote on the motion and then see where that takes us.
Mr. Collins, interested.
Mr. Collins submitted a letter of interest. So, when we had our original, not our original, but our last meeting, and when we decided on the composition, we had, we had decided in that meeting that we were going to ask the building administrators to decide amongst themselves, but they didn't get that message. So, three, we're very thankful that three members of building administration submitted letters of intent, and they, yeah, they didn't realize, so that's the situation.
The same thing happened for central office.
It did?
Well, they were supposed to give us one.
But I think that it was communicated to them, maybe, and I don't, I don't know what was communicated to them, so I can't speak to that. I just know that the building admins didn't know that. What is the desire of the committee? Do you want to vote on the motion that's on the table here?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, there's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you please pull this committee?
Member of Congress?
Yes.
Member of Congress?
Yes.
Member of the House?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you to all of the folks that have submitted letters of interest to participate in this committee. It is by far one of the most important things that the school committee carries out as part of our roles of volunteers in this community, and it will undoubtedly be a really important decision that all of us make over the course of the next several months. So, thank you for everybody that stepped up. The next item on the agenda is the review, transfer signing of warrants, bills, payroll, and vouchers. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, meeting adjourned, everyone. Good night.